Yes. Okay, thank you. So it is actually 7:00 PM right at this moment. So, welcome to Market Township's regular scheduled planning commission meeting of Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. And with that, we'll start with roll call. Chairman Springer is to Six Eagles Nest Road is here.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Dave Wigan, Brooklyn Road.
Steve Hakenin, Lake Enchantment.
Very good. We have all four commissioners here. And with that, we need to look at our agenda. I would ask the commission, we have a gentleman here from Michigan State University. You've met him before online. Dr. Wayne Baer from Michigan State University, and I would like to move him to, it would be privileged comment, and we don't have a place right now for that, but I would like to do that. Let's do that before public comment. So, and then public comment will occur after privileged comment, if other commissioners are okay with that.
Okay, Mike, and I have an agenda item I'd like to add.
All right, sir.
I would like to add 6C, discussion on detailed use regulations and temporary use permits.
Okay. Do we have somebody else that will approve the agenda, those amendments? Hearing none, I will move that the agenda is approved with those amendments.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we have to do roll call vote with video, so I am the motion maker, so I am, yes? Mr. Wigan?
I'm yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Hakenin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, with that, we have the previous meeting minutes from June 24th. Any changes, edits, something we missed? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mike, with no objection, I would move to approve the minutes of June 24th.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
That was Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call. We get Wigan is?
Yes.
Johnson is?
Yes.
Springer is? Yes. Hakenin? Thank you. Passes unanimously, those are the minutes, okay. We are now, what we're doing is moving, actually, it's a correspondence 8B. You'll see on your agenda, Market Township MSUX. That's also extension with the Mach 2 project update. And we have Dr. Wayne Baer here tonight with us to tell us, give us an update on the progress and how we're doing, and thank you for being here, Dr. Baer. You're on, sir.
Yeah, well, it's my pleasure. Thank you, Chairman Springer and members of the planning commission. I just wanted to give a quick update at the request of your chairman on the project and what we've been up to. I know most of you have been involved. I presented to the planning commission earlier, or later this spring, I should say. And we, at this point, the climate health adaptation projects that we've been involved to, affectionately known as Mach 2, we've, we've completed the final draft report that's been sent and received by the township at this point. And so, we're looking for comments, any final comments on the final draft? That report is a 50-plus page document and includes over 40 planning recommendations, about 40 planning recommendations and more action steps that go along with that. So, I know that that was sent on along to the committee and, and perhaps Chairman Springer has forwarded that along to the planning commission as well. So, at this point, we're at the tail end of the project, at least in terms of the planning process. The report and all the public meetings that we've had have all been put together into that report. And if you haven't had a chance to, to take a look at it yet, really, the recommendations are focused around four themes. Connectivity, aesthetics, placemaking, and revitalization. And of course, our focus was along the corridor, but many of these recommendations can apply for throughout the township. So, I, and in terms of a next step with this, really, I think there's, there's several items that I think are noteworthy at this point, and I'll, I can open it up for just some questions. One, they're part of the competitive process, because Marquette Township had applied for this grant. This was paid for through funding that MSU had received from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services through the Centers for Disease Control. And there is some money, a few thousand dollars, that'll be available for a demonstration implementation project as well. So, from one of the recommendations along the corridor, we had briefly talked about that at our last public final presentation meeting, a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago now, that you can identify one of the areas perhaps along the corridor that we could do a demonstration rain garden or one of the other interventions that's mentioned in the plan. So, that's some grant money that'll be available, and we can, I can further follow up with Jason McCarthy and Michael Springer on that in terms of connecting you with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. But in terms of the planning commission, I think the relevance of this document really are several items. One, I know you're going through a master plan update, similar to what the city of Marquette did when we worked with them several years back on a, on a climate adaptation plan. They incorporated that into their, their master plan as an appendix document. So, that's certainly a possibility here. Many of the recommendations that are, that are in the plan, our plan that, that we prepared, can be incorporated into your zoning ordinance and site plan review. So, I think as there's redevelopments that take place along the corridor and new development, many of those recommendations addressing climate adaptation and things that are already part of your master plan goals, we've, we've aligned those recommendations up with both the climate health reports that were previously done from the countywide process, as well as your local documents, such as your, your, your master plan and, and other documents. So, there's a easy reference back to goals and objectives there. So, you know, I think in short, there's some short, medium, and long-range type recommendations in there that I think would be helpful for the planning commission to take a look at and identify how they might be incorporated into your development and review process, master plan, and other grant activities that you're, you're currently seeking and, and could seek. We, we've identified a number of different funding sources where you can go to help get some of those implementation recommendations completed. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Chairman Springer, I think you're on mute. I am. Thank you, Dr. Baer. Any questions for Dr. Baer? All right, sir. We're looking forward to reading the report and moving ahead and looking forward to the grant application and seeing what we can, we can come up with. That'll be a committee decision, but being a member of that committee, we'll be working on it. Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to commend the, the planning commission and the, the committee's work. This was a lot of public deliberation process, and Marquette Township has really been a leader statewide in some of these endeavors and, and the county. So, just want to thank you for your effort and extra time on this. I think there's counties throughout the state that'll be looking at this process and some of the, the work that you're doing and implementing as a model for moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baer.
All right, enjoy the rest of your planning commission meeting. Good evening.
Good night. Okay, we have now public comment. Who do we have? Do we have any public? I'm not seeing any public. So, seeing none, we will move on. New business. This is a public hearing, 070820-1. It is the, to consider the draft Market Township Recreation Plan for 2020 through 2024. Mr. McCarthy or Mr. Dietrichson, would you like to say anything before we open the public hearing?
I'll take a whack at it. This is the third plan, I think. Actually, no, it's the second five-year recreation plan that I've been a part of since joining the township in 2011. Probably, I can say that we've accomplished all of the projects that were on, that were slated in our previous plan from 2009, I believe it was, to 2000, no, that's not right, 2014 to 2019. All of those projects have been accomplished, albeit, there's a couple that are ongoing and just general maintenance type of things, but major projects include New Kitty Park, an ice rink at Lyons Field, a warming house at Lyons Field, an underpass of US 41, trail connection from our trailhead at Schwamwood up to the Iron or Heritage Trail. And through that, I think we've received nearly, I want to say about two and a half million dollars. Well, actually, when you add the tunnel, it's probably closer to $4 million in grants, of which the township has paid, I want to say less than 25% because we received such a large financial contribution towards the tunnel that was not general fund dollars and yet still accomplished our goals. So, I'm really excited for this plan. This plan has a whole new batch of projects, a lot of which includes continuation and pursuit of the extension of our non-motorized transportation network, a trailhead on 492, I'm sorry, off of Grove Street. You know, continued amenities to existing park properties where and when feasible, and a few other projects spattered in. So, we've updated the plan. We've also updated our goals and objectives to reflect more of the state or the score for the state comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Thanks to, you know, Mr. Springer and the rest of the rec committee. This is a very well-written document as well, very thoughtful in its scope and all obtainable projects. I mean, when you look at being able to put an underpass under the highway without spending any taxpayer dollars, I think we can just about do anything we want, right? So, I'm very proud of this, this plan, this project, and the work that we've done with the last five-year plan. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to get this plan approved, or that's the objective, so that we are able to register with the, the DNR, and so that where and when feasible, we're able to apply for some recreation grant fundings to keep these other projects moving forward. Those would be my comments, and I'd open it up to Planner Dietrichson if he has any additional comments.
I don't think I could really say it any better than that, but, you know, this has been, I've caught the, the tail end of the process here, so I'm happy to, to see it through, you know, this last push, if you will, and I'm excited to, to look at the, the goals and objectives and all the action items that, you know, this is going to serve as, as a reference to. And looking forward to, to using it and, and working on some projects that, that we can cross off these, these lists.
Okay, any other comment? I'll open the public hearing at this point. So, it is 7:15. I'm opening the public hearing. No gavel? At 7:06, it's, oh, okay, go ahead, Jason.
I can give some quick public comments. So, okay, on Monday, Planner Dietrichson and I did a walkthrough of Schwamwood Park with Mike Burnett and Lori Halsworth from NTN, and we staked out the connector trail from Lost Creek to the underpass pathway, connecting from Iron or Heritage Trail down to Pete's Pass. We ensured that the entrance to the trail and no part of the trail will be located on the five-acre parcel that we are currently marketing for sale, that the township owns. Furthermore, we had a, well, it was very hot. I'll say it that way. It was very hot to start. I don't think Ryan and I have probably worked that hard physically at our job in quite some time, so that was nice. But we also had a lovely conversation with them. And they're the two movers and shakers with NTN. Of course, they have an executive board that they have to be responsible to, but I expressed that we were very excited at this working relationship that we have with them and nurturing that relationship. Essentially, they're putting trail infrastructure in on our, on our property at no cost, and they'll also take over the maintenance. They're also going to improve the footbridge. They're going to make a connection to the parking lot as well. Furthermore, Pete's coming in, sorry. Furthermore, we had a conversation regarding the Grove Street Trailhead project. And NTN, at least loosely in discussion, is willing to fund the match requirement on that project. So, if we come up with a project, let's say there's a changing building, some trail kiosk, some educational components, a bike repair station, things that are commonly associated with a trailhead. NTN is willing to finance or fund the match, which means we could probably apply for a grant if the board, you know, and planning commission, rec committee agree with it, of course. We could probably put together a grant application for 2021. So, that's why this, this is so important to get this plan approved and on file with the DNR, so that when those deadlines come out in the spring with regard to grant applications, we can meet that and we can get all our ducks aligned prior to that time. So, I think there's a really great possibility to continue working on our relationship with them, and that's just a quick anecdote from our meeting on Monday with NTN.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason. I mean, you, you've always been good at building relationships, and that's what it's going to take. So, thank you for that. Thank you, thank you for having the vision. Moving that forward. Any other comment before I close the public hearing? Okay, with that, it is 7:19. I'm closing the public hearing. Commissioners, comment?
I have a question.
Okay.
Jim? I remember discussing in one of our meetings, some kind of a sledding-ski hill area off of the Wellhead Road, and I was just wondering, and I didn't see anything in this about that. I just wondered if that was just taken out of there, or if it's still on the back burner, or yours down the road here, or what?
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. I'm not sure why it was accidentally omitted.
You know? Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, Jason.
I know that there was kind of a, a pecking order, if you will, to the projects. And if it didn't make it on this one, it can also be added. I think what the rec committee really recommended was projects that are consistently funded by the DNR at this time, but it's certainly a project that we can add to the plan at any time.
You know, there was actually even at one point, we had plans for having a sledding hill just to the north of our township hall. Mr. Wigan?
Yeah, the, the sledding hill out on the Wellhead property was not roundly supported at the board level because of the liability issues and the required maintenance issues. And it didn't, it wasn't really well-received at the board level. I think that had a lot to do with why it was omitted.
Okay.
Was there any other alternative discussed in the other area where you possibly could do that? And some kind of a tubing hill, you know, like what they have up in Ishman?
No, it was really a matter of if the, if the township develops a sledding hill, then the township is on the hook for the liability for people that get hurt on the sledding hill. That was a concern, and the other concern was, how do we maintain it and groom it? That's an added expense that was never really addressed. Now, I know that there are ways to get around that. There are certainly volunteers that would be more than happy to jump in and, and groom it, but those were the issues that were presented by the board, and that was one of the reasons that they didn't really support it.
Anyone talk to Ishman to see how they do theirs, because the city has liability on that and responsibility for grooming it?
Yeah, and I, I can't answer that. I just know what their concerns were.
I guess I think it'd be something really good if you could do something like that in the township and, you know, maybe somehow put that into the plan and sport it a little further.
And, and I think if, if the planning commissioner, the rec committee for that matter, explored some alternatives there and come up with a plan that would take, answer some of those questions, to add it to the rec plan is, is not a big process. You could go ahead and amend that rec plan without waiting the whole five years to do it. It's just a matter of answering the questions so everybody is comfortable putting it into the plan.
Yeah, I also want to point out that at the very end of this plan, on page 28, it talks about potential funding sources. I mean, everything with, it costs money, and it's, some of these places, like cities, might have bigger coffers that they can pull from for the recreation funding. I believe Nagone Township has a recreation village. And so, you know, one of the ways to, if nothing else, to be able to come up with the match money for these grants that we'd like to write is to have a village that would just support the grants, and we also have to also be cognizant of maintenance as well. So, so as Mr. Wigan points out, you know, this certainly can be easily amended. It can, you know, looked at yearly, and Mr. Johnson encourage you to keep that fight up, because there's a lot of people that have talked about sledding hills and wanting those. Any, any other comments? Okay, we are now down to Mr. Wigan. Oh, I'm sorry, we have planning commission bylaws review. I did not.
Can we entertain a motion on that?
Oh, yeah, we should finish the, we closed it. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Wigan?
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve the recreation plan and move it to the township board for adoption.
I'm going to second that. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Go ahead, Jim.
Was there going to be an amendment to that for the sledding hill? Are you just going to change it later, or are you going to do that?
No, that, the.
Let's, let's put this, make sure this is in the minutes so that it, I mean, I'm sure Mr. McCarthy has a file that he's already keeping for the next rec plan. And so, those kinds of things can go in, so we can actually do an annual review of this. So, I don't know if we, at this point, to edit this particular plan would be expedient. I think what we need to do is to take your comments and to put them in the next upgrade. All right. Okay, thank you. Dave?
Yeah, one of the things, Jim, is the reason for the, for the rec plan is so, it's basically not only to lay out where we're going in the next five years, but if you're going to be looking for funding sources for some of these things with grants, it's necessary to have the rec plan and have it on file with the DNR. If it becomes a hot-button issue, and there's a lot of people that, that are rallied behind a sledding hill on that, it can be amended into the rec plan if you're looking for funding sources. Otherwise, you can just do it.
Are you advertising for Nike?
Who are you talking to?
Just do it.
Never mind. And Jason's got his hand up.
Okay.
This is to cover Jim's comment, our question, and one of the goals and objectives for the next five years is to acquire property within the Hartwood Forest property that is located in the township. Not to put the cart before the horse, but I, I think that if we were to acquire that property and apply for a grant that involved a number of different uses, because remember, I've seen outdoor amphitheater schematic. I've seen ball fields, soccer fields. I'm sure that that would fit in the scope of that action item in our, in our recreation master plan, a sledding hill, and that would, it would just require the ability to acquire some, some property, which is, so, I, I think that it would fit nicely in there if that were to happen. Now, that's in year 2024. So, now, any of the projects that are listed in the plan can be accomplished at any point throughout the five years. So, if there becomes an opportunity and the city comes to us and says, hey, we want to sell 120 acres that is in the Marquette Township boundary that, that we want to divest to the township. If you remember, all that property is zoned properly. It's zoned forest recreation. I, I think that your idea, as well as a number of other ideas, would certainly blend in with that action item, and I think it would, it would corroborate with that action item as well.
Okay, I believe we are ready for a vote here. Mr. Wigan?
Yes.
Springer? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Hakenin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Dietrichson, for all the work you put in on this. It's a very professional-looking document, and I'm proud to have been part of it. So, 6B, planning commission bylaws review. Mr. Wigan, I'm going to turn that over to you, because you've been the facilitator and the editor of the last edition.
Well, hopefully, everybody has had a chance to read through this multiple times. What my involvement in it, other than some comments that I made, was to rewrite it based on the comments received from everybody. If you remember, the last time we looked at this, there was a bunch of red line comments and yellow line comments. And as we received them, we entered it in, we talked about it the last time. And what I did this time was I got rid of all of those red line and yellow line comments, straightened it up as best as my background allows me to straighten it up and prepared it for presentation to, to the board as, as a, background allows me to straighten it up and prepared it for presentation to the board as a draft document. So what you have in front of you, there was a number of sections added. There was, and I don't know how much we need to talk about, it was effectively pretty well cleaned up. It did clean up a couple of gray areas. And Mike, you can probably speak to that better than I can.
You know, actually, Dave, this was not in our planning commission packet, correct?
No, it wasn't. I sent it out. I sent it out to everybody almost a week ago. So that everybody would have a chance to review it prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I'm feeling like what we need to do is put this off to the next meeting to approve this. That's just my opinion. And give us a little bit more time. Maybe it's me that needs more time. I mean, it's other commissioners. What do they think? I know, Dave, you like to see your work go to fruition.
Well, and I guess all I would say is, is I think we've effectively beat this to death.
Have we?
And from my perspective, I'm fine moving it forward for an approval. And I guess I would defer to the rest of the commissioners to what they think. But I'm fine with it either way. If you want to hold off another couple of weeks.
Okay, I was never good. You know, I never liked seeing horses die. So beating them to death, it's never been.
Well, we've been doing this for a couple of months now.
Well, all right, okay, all right.
So I would.
All right, Mr. Wigan, you want to make a motion?
What do they want to do?
My recommendation would be for the Planning Commission to send over to legal for legal review prior to sending them to the board anyway. So if you want, between now and the 22nd of July, which is our next meeting, I can transmit these to legal counsel and have those comments back to you by that time so that you would know whether or not you're on the dirt board or not.
Do we need to just accept the draft and move it to legal review?
Yeah, I think that if there's concurrence, I'll send it along and we'll put it back on the agenda for the 22nd.
Mr. Wigan?
Does that sound good? I'm waiting for Steve and Jim to weigh in on what they want to do.
Thumbs up, guys. Thumbs down.
Yeah, I think we should get all the i's dotted and the k's crossed with the i's, k's, whatever.
Mr. Wigan, you make the motion. Oh, sorry, Jim.
Yes, I'm fine. I'm fine to go with it anytime. I've read it and I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. And Jim, we also, hopefully, again, the minutes will reflect your comments. And we also will keep that in mind for updates. And like Mr. Wigan says, if there becomes a demand for it, we'll respond. Okay, Mr. Wigan, would you make the motion, please?
Yeah, I would move that the Planning Commission accepts the draft bylaws as presented and move it to legal review and return back to the Planning Commission for review.
Who would like to support that?
I'll support it.
Johnson? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Wigan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Springer is yes? Hickenin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 6C, this has been added. Mr. Wigan?
I'm gonna, Jason, I'm wondering if you might want to, this is an issue that came up at the board meeting last night. And it has to do with a temporary use permit that was applied for for an event over in the Westwood Mall. Is that still called the Westwood Mall? Anyway, and I think Jason probably be a better one to explain how we got through that last night at the board meeting, and then I would make comments after that.
Yeah, interesting meeting last night. So effectively, we had a broad discussion on a proposed concert slash carnival that would involve up to 500 people in the Westwood parking lot on the weekend of August 14th to the 15th. And it definitely raised my hackles. In fact, I know that Planner Dietrichson received the application on Friday the 2nd, I believe it was. And I'm sorry, Thursday the 2nd. And I asked him not to administer that right away because there was some review that needed to happen. A lot of research was done. And effectively, I made the township board aware that I had some concerns with regard to the general health, safety, and welfare of our community for having that many people attend an outdoor religious concert slash spoken word worship event, if you will. And there wasn't, well, actually, there was in the end. Today, that permit was denied. A letter was sent referencing Article 1, Section 103 and Section 104, which, when you look at an ordinance, sometimes you've got to zoom back from the detail of a specific section and look at what is the intent of that ordinance. And the intent of our ordinance is to protect the general health and welfare and safety of our residents. So I was able to reference that section as well as find a number of technical errors with the application. Planner Dietrichson was kind enough to include in his email to me that section on specific temporary uses. And there are provisions in there that are required with any specific temporary use, including sign off from the county health department with regard to the provision of sanitary services at an event like that. An electric permit from the county building codes department with regard to temporary outdoor lighting. And a site plan is also required. There was a rudimentary or hasty site plan that was included with the application, but certainly it didn't have enough detail for the fire department to do any kind of pre-fire prevention or emergency response, should there be some kind of an emergency that the fire department is called upon for. Additionally, the permit fee was not paid. The signer of the application was the township or the Westwood Mall manager, not the property owner. There was a couple of other things that kind of popped up on there. But what Dave is getting at and what transpired last night is that basically you had all seven members of the township board pretty much against this happening in our community at that time due to the fact that we are in a state of emergency during a health pandemic. And the township board isn't able to make that determination. That determination in that particular section comes down to the zoning administrator. And, you know, I definitely raised the question and but the township board doesn't have the authority in that case. The zoning administrator does. And in working with legal counsel and sharing, you know, some ideas that I had, we were able to come up with, well, I drafted the letter, of course, and I sent it out today. Subsequently, the township board is holding a special meeting tomorrow to consider additional measures to prevent those types of large gatherings that exceed a certain attendance threshold for a period of time. The key with, and what we're getting at is potentially a moratorium. And the key to moratoriums is that you don't want them to go long periods of time. Like you can't do a moratorium for, say, a year or two years. That starts to infringe upon property rights, et cetera. And there's plenty of legal cases that you can review that would demonstrate that. What Commissioner Wigan's getting at is that there's really no broad brush provision in that section of the ordinance, detailed use regulations, which is Article 16. For the zoning administrator, when you get down to specific temporary uses such as concerts or circuses or tent events or outdoor concerts, it's really kind of nebulous and vague. So what Dave is suggesting is that there be a provision in the ordinance or an amendment to the ordinance which would allow for the zoning administrator to deny a permit based on the incapability or, what's the word I'm looking for? Compatibility with the general health, safety, and welfare of our community. So instead of having to reference a really broad overreaching, if you will, article like Article 1, which is the intent and purpose of the ordinance, it would be very specific to those types of gatherings. And I think, you know, during this time and considering the current situation, it's probably not a bad amendment to make. Although I'm not sure how that would be worded yet, but if it's the consensus of the planning commission, if you give the staff some direction, I'm sure by the next meeting, we could come up with some language that would be adequate for consideration to move to a public hearing, or at least something that we could discuss. But Dave, if I'm wrong or if I missed anything there, please let me know.
Yeah, that's, I pretty well covered it. What just became very obvious even from Legal's way in at the meeting last night is there wasn't a clear cut way that this could be addressed. And unless you got into some vague areas, the planning administrator's hands are kind of tied as to what he can do there. What I was suggesting, I kind of went to work on it today. And what I was suggesting is under Article 1, Section 104, under intent. And I don't know if any of you guys have that in front of you. If you want, I can read through it real quick. It said, "The goals and objectives of an individual landowners and residents of the township may at times conflict or compete. Therefore, the primary intent of this performance oriented zoning ordinance is to minimize land use conflicts between landowners and the public interest by devising performance standards to eliminate or minimize potential negative impacts of varying uses on adjacent lands. The performance standards are designed to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents as well as to encourage creativity in the design of future land developments within the township. Zoning districts designation are few in number. However, each district has a specific purpose and the distinction between each district is significant. The districts have been located and sized to accommodate a long range of objectives based upon the comprehensive development plan of Marquette Township." There's nothing specific in there that, and the big question was, is there's nothing in there that allows you to deny something based on the health and welfare of the residents of Marquette Township. So what I was suggesting for a starting point is at the end of that paragraph, the end of that in Section 104, is to simply add the sentence that states, "The planning zoning administrator, planning commission, and/or Marquette Charter Township Board may ultimately deny any application or permit otherwise allowed within this zoning ordinance in the interest of health, safety, and/or welfare of Marquette Charter Township residents." That gives us a clause to go back to, and this is why it's being denied. That's my suggestion. In addition to that, I would like to see the Planning Commission recommend to the board that they place a moratorium on gatherings for a period of time to address the pandemic we are currently in. Because if we do this amendment to the zoning ordinance, it's going to take a minimum, if we put it on the fast track, it's going to take a minimum of six weeks. Probably closer to two, two and a half months. There's going to be a whole flood of these. In my opinion, there's going to be a flood of these coming in for outdoor gatherings just like this one, which from my perspective is nothing more than a carnival. And I think it's fairly uncontrollable.
My only advice, first of all, I think that's a great recommendation. Two, there's nothing preventing this organization from looking outside of our community to find a location that would work for them. Three, I would be very careful if you do move forward with the recommendation to the board to put a number on the allowable number of people that you would establish a threshold for. That'll be discussed at the board level, I'm sure. But I would just, if my recommendation would be, if the planning commission does decide to, you know, make a recommendation to the board to put a moratorium in place, I would just phrase it in the sense that, you know, not so much maybe something along the lines of gatherings during this state of emergency or any state of emergency. But I'd be really careful about placing a number on it because there are rights that people have. However, I did reference in my letter to the organization today that the governor's executive order number 115 allows the municipalities to have a more restrictive permitting process or regulations than what the executive order actually recommends. And that's the way that township board, I believe, is going to handle it tomorrow.
And that's why I intentionally left any number off of there. It's just recommending that there's a, that the township board initiate or pass a moratorium on gatherings of specific size to address during the pandemic. And that would give us time to get something like this in place so that you've got a little more teeth to put on the review of a request of this nature.
So, Mr. Wigan, you're saying, obviously, this is going to take six weeks to get it in the zoning ordinance. But what about a motion tonight that would be in time for the special meeting tomorrow at the board to that?
Okay, that's.
To that objective.
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting two motions. The first motion is to initiate a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to include at the end of Article 1, Section 104, a sentence stating, as I read before, "The planning zoning administrator, planning commission, and/or Marquette Charter Township Board may ultimately deny any application or permit otherwise allowed within this zoning ordinance in the interest of health, safety, and/or welfare of the Marquette Charter Township residents." Just add that sentence at the end of that paragraph, and that would be the sum total of the text amendment. In addition to that, after that.
Second motion?
There would be a second motion recommending to the board that a moratorium be considered addressing gatherings of specific sizes.
Okay, well, let's start with the first one.
Well, I'd like to hear what the rest of, everybody else got to say.
Don't we need a second on your first motion?
I haven't made a motion yet. I'd like to hear whatever.
Oh, I thought you had two motions there. All right. Mr. Johnson?
I guess, Mike, you know, I agree with you about, you know, the larger gatherings. And I wish the city would be thinking like this also at the same time. Could have avoided a lot of what happened over the weekend. But I guess with the First Amendment, when you're, who's going to decide whether it's, I'm assuming Jason would be deciding if it's going to hurt health, safety, welfare of the community then?
Yeah, that's why it was listed in that order. I mean, obviously, the first person that looks at this, and it may go no farther than that. I mean, depending on what he decides, is the zoning and planning administrator. And all it is, is that the planning commission and/or the board could step in if they thought that there was an issue there and say, no, it's not in the health. I mean, it could go either way. It's not, I don't know that we want to put the whole onus of yea or nay on the zoning administrator.
That's kind of the issue I had. And, you know, I was kind of wondering about that. That, that's kind of the issue I had, and you know, I was kind of wondering about that is he's got to determine all that on his own, and you know, maybe if you want to just put something about if in a state of, during a state of emergency, or you know, something that relates to this.
Well, and I, I think the, the, the reason for, for this first consideration on the text amendment is not necessarily to address what's going on right now. It's to address the fact that we, during this process, we found where we had a kind of a hole in our, in our text or zoning ordinance that isn't concise in determining whether you should issue the permit or not. And this is just to close that gap. It's got really nothing to do with coronavirus. It's just addressing a shortfall of the zoning ordinance and putting a sentence in there so that gives a definitive spot for the zoning administrator or the planning commissioner or the board to direct or comment to, and this is why we're not going to allow this. Because the only thing that was pointed out on the behalf of the, of Legal last night is there wasn't any definitive location that would allow anybody to say no based on the health and welfare of the residents.
Well, I take offense to that. As a seasoned zoning administrator, I knew that that was in there. And that's what I explained to Dave earlier in the day, which started up, you know, fairly early today. Whenever you look at an ordinance, like I said before, if you take a look back out at the 10,000 foot level and you just look at the intent of that ordinance, that provision will get you out of a lot of trouble. I do agree with, you know, maybe adding the section or article, Section 1.04, or adding 1.04 or 1.05. But I think that it may, I understand where he's going with that, but I also think that there needs to be a check and balance. For instance, it may not be just the planning commission, it may only be the zoning administrator in the township board, or the zoning administrator in the ZVA. We can leave that up to legal review, but I believe that the intent of Dave's comments is well taken, and I think that it could be a friendly amendment to our ordinance.
Well, I, I believe, I believe that's the case, and that's what I intended when I put and/or in there at the end.
Okay.
So it can be done by, by one or any other, any, any of the, the groups.
Yeah, the nice thing about land use is that there's really no ability to challenge a denial on a land use because there are no use variances in the state of Michigan. If you deny somebody on a proposed use, they can't really appeal that decision to the ZVA, in, in my view, or at least they could appeal it to the ZVA, but the ZVA couldn't legally grant a use variance. They can only grant dimensional variances. And that's a learning point for Ryan, too. Teaching moment.
All right.
Haven't heard anything out of Steve yet.
Well, well, first of all, when you say that you're going to, you wanted to have a caveat in there that you have put a moratorium on gatherings of a certain amount of people. Is that correct?
No, the moratorium is not even addressed yet in this motion. This motion.
This is a different motion.
Is strictly for the text amendment. I'm sorry.
The moratorium would only apply, apply to something that they apply. The moratorium that we're going to consider later would only apply to something that is before the zoning administrator.
Uh, no, no, the, the moratorium is something that the board has to initiate, and the board takes action on it, and they can make it apply to anything they want, which, and it's got nothing to do, and it's no part of this proposed amendment. Right, the moratorium, if it comes later, would be a motion separate from this.
Or if someone was going to have a wedding that had more than your limit, that we could deny them the ability to have a wedding?
Yeah, we would remove that, we would remove the bride and the groom. We actually have to, what Dave's talking about right now, Steve, is the first emotion. And the second motion is what you're questioning, I believe. Okay.
Well, exactly right. I thought we were just discussing this.
Right, so let's, let's concentrate on his first motion, which is to initiate a zoning text amendment.
Mike, if I, if you might, you might want to get a hold, Jason here is trying to get in, and we're kind of ignoring him.
Well, it's, it's, a wedding, if it's being held at the township hall, the moratorium would apply to that if it was a gathering of large, more than the amount of people that the township board allows to have. Now, sometimes a wedding wouldn't necessarily require a zoning permit either. But this particular land use does require a zoning permit, and that's why it's important in this scenario, so. I, I completely support the zoning text amendment. I think it'll need some massaging, of course. The most important thing, though, and what I explained to Dave this morning, is that the fastest way to address the situation is to have a moratorium in place. And you have to be careful with moratoriums. You can't put them in place, like I said, for long periods of time. It's just a specific thing, much like the medical marijuana. I know that there was a, an ongoing, now you can revisit that moratorium after several months, but usually you put them in place for three to six months, and then you revisit that to see what the situation is, so this will be very similar to that.
Okay, so Mr. Wiegand, we're going to consider that a motion, what you have read twice to us, that you have provided in a July 8 memo to Randy, food for thought?
Yeah, if I could, I would make a motion to initiate a text amendment to Article One, Section 104, intent that at the end of the paragraph that states, "The planning and zoning administrator, planning commission and/or Marquette Charter Township Board may ultimately deny any application or permit otherwise allowed within this zoning ordinance in the interest of the health, safety and/or welfare of the Marquette Charter Township residents." That would be the motion.
Okay, I will support that motion. Thank you for reading it a third time. Discussion, any more discussion just on this motion? Mr. Johnson?
So who and how would be decided who's going to hear this, would it go to the planning commission, go to Jason, then the planning commission, then the township board? What would be the?
That's kind of where the massaging needs to, needs to happen, right? So, I mean, we come up with a concept for a zoning text amendment, and the planning commission says, "Okay, I think this is what we want." I mean, I can move it to legal and have council review it before the next planning commission meeting, so. You know, provided that we have our concept correct, I think we can massage that and come back with better language for the next meeting that could be considered legal, working with Roger.
Yeah, I guess that's where I would see it going, is going to legal, back to the commission, and then from there, it can be, it'd have to be scheduled for a public hearing. And after the public hearing, it can be looked at and sent to the board with a recommendation for approval. That's why it takes so long to get it done. And that's, that ordinance, you're right, Jason, that has to be read twice, right?
At the board level, yes.
Two separate board meetings, it has to have a first and a second reading.
Lots of vetting through that, so yes, yeah.
So I, I actually like the way it is written because Jason is the gatekeeper. I mean, if this is something that he feels like needs to come to the commission, if it's something that's set in stone and right there, he can take care of it. But he may also need to involve the board, so I think having his name or his position first is a good idea.
Well, for instance, in the ordinance, if it, there's a provision in the, in the ZVA article, zoning board of appeals, where it talks about if, if the zoning administrator needs clarification, he can go to the ZVA for clarification. He can schedule a ZVA meeting to have them rectify a situation that is, that is not clear. So I know what, I know what you're saying, I know what you want, and I think that provided along that vein, we can come up with something that's doable.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, we will have, let me make sure I got this right. Okay, Mr. Wiegand, the motion maker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, seconder?
Yes.
Springer is a yes. Aiken in?
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Wiegand, you had a second part of this that concerns the board, and would you articulate that again? This is where Mr. Aiken in.
If I would make a motion to recommend to the board that they consider a moratorium on gatherings of specific sizes during the coronavirus pandemic. Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Friendly amendment per the governor's executive order 2020-115.
There you go, because it needs to tie into that, more than, more than just a coronavirus, per, per the executive order.
God, it's that good. I'll second that. I mean, somebody else want to second this?
Before we do that, how about if?
Well, let us just second it. Let me second it, and then we can have a discussion. I, I will second that. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
So how about we tie in more moratorium length, the length of the governor's executive order?
We can't do anything with the moratorium as a planning commission. We can only recommend to the board that they develop a moratorium, and it's totally up to them to develop the language as well as the length and tie it. Want to tie it to.
Yeah, and to Steve's.
Couldn't recommend?
Yeah, to Steve's point, legal counsel will, will make that happen and set some parameters or a sunset on that, Steve.
Okay.
Good question, Steve.
Moratorium has.
We need to challenge things because.
And it follows a regular format, and that's why the, the legal and, and the manager, they put that together, and it's much like a resolution. It follows very specific wording.
All right. We are now on to, there is no unfinished business. We have correspondence. Mr. McCarthy, would you fill us in our cap grant that has been approved?
We're going to go into hyper mode, hyperspeed mode here, so I'm just going to share the screen.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote on that motion.
Yeah, we did. Sure did. Oh, the first motion. Okay, jeez. I'm glad the secretary's keeping track. All right, so we have Wiegand and Springer on that one.
I'm a yes.
And we've had discussion, and Wiegand, you're?
I'm a yes.
Okay, I'm a yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Aiken in?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Correspondence.
All right, this is the down and dirty version. The 2021 Traffic Alternatives Grant has been submitted, and we should be made aware whether or not we're successful in August. Obviously, we had 8B kind of bumped up to the top of the agenda tonight. I don't feel a need to cover that. I did have correspondence with legal counsel, Zappa. I thought he was going to attend our meeting tonight, but apparently he must have got hung up or forgot about it. But basically, he really liked our zoning text amendment. He does have an issue with the definitions. I know that we indicated that we took those out of the, you know, the state law, but he's going to have, before the next meeting, and this is what the update was, he's going to have a full-blown review of that with some recommendations on how to make what you want to do constitutional. So that's all I had on that, and then if you want to roll into reports, I can either keep going, or you can start at the top with the township board report.
Mr. Wiegand, that would be you, sir.
Yeah, the, the board, last night's meeting at the board, there was a consideration of opening of Lions Field for team sports from July through September. As you guys are aware, the field is, is rented to the Marquette Little League Girl Softball and to the high school softball JV team. And they wanted to open it from July through September. That was turned down by the board for the same reason that we were concerned about the, the other issue we just got done talking about. Let's see, they can, they awarded the M and RTF landscaping bid for Schwemwood was awarded last night to Overstar. And there was a, an adoption resolution of concurrence for the master plan. And that was about it.
Then we have road committee report. Mr. Wiegand?
The road committee was pretty quick and simple. They're done with the crack sealing of the roads, and they started the infrared hot patch. They marked out the areas, and the hot patching is supposed to begin on the next Monday, and they're supposed to be done a week from this coming Friday. And that, we talked about the, the GS88, I, I never do get the acronym correct there, that research alternative to chip seal, and it doesn't turn out that that's going to be the replacement that we hoped it would be for chip seal. It's more of an enhancement of crack seal, but we're doing still, road committee is still doing some research on it. And we're, we're thinking the way that might end up is we do a test area during next year's the 2021 road rehabilitation project, and we'll just find an area that we can do a test on that, see how it works out. But that's it for the road committee.
Okay, the rec committee report. Our next meeting will be July 21st, it'll be two weeks from yesterday. The biggest thing, and actually what Mr. McCarthy reported on earlier today, or agreed with NTN and the collaboration that he has with them, and putting that connector trail through is big for the rec committee right now, thanks to, I mentioned this last night to the board, but thanks to Mr. Deidreton for getting the maps out in the kiosks out in Schwammert Park. And that's about it for rec committee. Unless Jason or Mr. Deidreton as members or have something to add to the rec committee?
No, not, nothing along the rec committee. I think the rec plan, getting that to the board is a big deal, as is like Mike said, that, that trail connector, so. Yeah, having Ryan on board's really loosened up a lot of time to accomplish some of the, you know, those longer, I don't know, not about longer, but projects that have been kind of hanging out there for a while, so I appreciate his assistance and allows us to really kind of divvy up the workload a lot, and I appreciate that a lot. So 9D, NAPA proposed parking lot expansion. We're currently awaiting a site plan. As you know, that there was some, a driveway configuration that was realigned in that area. We consolidated two driveways down into one. As such, NAPA has a little bit more property. Um, as you know, that there was some, uh, a driveway configuration that was realigned in that area. Um, we consolidated two driveways down into one. As such, Napa has a little bit more property to work with as a result of that. And they're gonna be, uh, massaging their parking lot to, uh, A, add a little bit of space, uh, to the north, uh, north of their garage, which will allow so, uh, for employee parking and the parking of their fleet vehicles, but most importantly, it'll add to the, uh, the experience of visiting, uh, Napa with some green space inclusion um, and some additional customer parking spaces, so we'll let you know when that comes, I'm not sure if that's gonna trigger a full-blown site plan review or not, we'll see what the numbers are. Has to be over five thousand square feet of impervious surface in addition to what's there. But we'll keep you posted on that e- either way. Uh, looks like Harbor Freight is moving forward, if I didn't re, I guess I kept that on there maybe, but uh, we reviewed and provided zoning compliance for Harbor Freight to move into the former, uh, Gander Outdoors location. Um, Ryan has been reviewing and working with the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission and their proposed new biological station, which will be located in the, um, Cornerstone Business Park. We anticipate that we'll be reviewing that site plan on July twenty-second, uh, provided that there's no major hiccups with our review. Um, nine G, Fox Subaru Buffer Yard update, I'll add that, um, there's been a number of trees put in um, behind Fox Subaru dealership, they've really done a great job with building berms and including, uh, a mix of plantings. The only thing that hasn't been planted are a hundred and seventy-five, uh, what they call, uh, uh, bear bulb or, uh, what's the terminology on that, Mike?
Herbory?
No, no, no. No, it's a bare, bare root, okay, so i- in order for them to get bare root plants, they have to be pulled out of a ground and then put back in the ground within a certain timeframe. Well, the best time for that to happen was in May, um, during the pandemic and they weren't able to make that transaction. So, um, they're gonna be planting those either later, the, uh, later this year in the fall or uh, as a backup, uh, in the spring of, uh, twenty-one, so. Trust me when I say that it looks a lot different than it did out there, uh, previously, so. Uh, we'll continue to work with them and obviously there's gonna be some caveats with this COVID thing, right? I mean, uh, we had a lot of work for them to do before, uh, July thirty-first of this season and they've, uh, they've accomplished, uh, all but, uh, those plantings, so there'll be me, even more trees going in, but it looks great the way it is and uh, not that I've had a lot of compliments on it, but it does look a lot better than it did. Um, nine H, um, last night the township board, if Dave didn't, uh, make you aware that they have, uh, awarded a bid for native landscaping to be placed uh, both at Lions Field and Schwimwood Park. And what that does effectively is that's our last scope item on three grant applications, so. We're gonna get that native landscaping in, uh, Overstar Incorporated was, uh, awarded a grant up to nineteen thousand nine hundred and nine dollars uh, to complete our native landscaping, uh, scope item and we received points on our grant application for that scope item, so it's very important that that be done to a T. Once that's complete, we'll be submitting for a full reimbursement. We received some reimbursement for the work that we've done, remember, these grants are all, uh, we pay out, we get the job done and then we recruit money back later. So this is a very important, uh, uh, project for us to get completed. As you know, nine I, the, uh, master plan resolution of concurrence was, uh, approved by the township board last night. I'm sure that the road committee made you aware of the twenty twenty road maintenance program, nine J, nine K. Um, I guess I just wanted to update you on the fact that a lot of punch list items were recently completed in the corridor with respect to the two thousand nineteen M dot project and I, they're, they're down to the nitty-gritty now, I know a lot of the cones are gone and it really starts to look nice, right, when you take away all the traffic constructions, signs and cones and, and just see it for what it is. Um, I did fly the drone, uh, recently, but the cones are still up, so next meeting I'll share some pictures with you that I took and I'll, I'll actually take some more uh, of some drone photos kind of before and after in the corridor. I did take the drone up for the purpose of the, um, uh, the tap grant to show them where the terminus of, uh, that existing pathway was, how it connects and then using the, the maps that, uh, Planner Dietrichson provided to tie it all together with the, uh, underpass and the Iron Heritage Trail. Um, and then nine I, uh, of course, we met on Monday uh, to talk about Schwimwood and the connector trail and I believe, um, they'll be starting on that, uh, once this other project that they're working on is done, but it, I would suspect you'll see a new trail in there sometime in August, uh, September. That was a mouthful there, sorry guys.
You did a great job on that, that was long-winded. Also, I gotta, gotta recognize the fact that you guys went out there and got sunburnt today. You and Ryan. So, thank you. All right, we are now on to the backside. Announcements, is there any additional announcements that need to be made? I know Pete LaRue is out there someplace, or he was earlier. Does he want to tell us, I think we still have something going on for the Christmas tree lighting?
Yeah, Michael, uh, there are, uh, Christmas tree lighting and Santa's still on the agenda, but we don't know the way this virus is going, if we're gonna be able to pull it off or not. I'm hoping that we can, hope the virus settles down a little bit and, uh, and see what happens. But we're, everything's on wait. Everything's on hold, excuse me.
Well, I understand that the Grinch wears a mask, so let's not be a bah humbug yet and, uh, let's hopefully we'll, we'll have a good Christmas tree lighting, but.
I hope so. Santa Claus might be kind of different, maybe.
And that was, uh, the twenty-fourth of November?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak on behalf of the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to additional comments by planning commissioners. Somebody like to start us off? Mr. Wigan?
I'd like to thank the rest of the commission for, uh, entertaining those, those motions and, uh, listening to all my concerns with respect to, uh, that text amendment and, and the recommendation for a moratorium, it got, uh, quite interesting last night at the board meeting, watching this, it was on and seeing where we were coming up a little short, so I went a little crazy today.
You know, but, and Dave, I was, uh, had an opportunity to listen in last night and it really seemed like all of the board had lots of reservations about what the particular application was for. And so I think this is a very good move, I think you'll find the board supportive, at least I hope so. Anyways, that was my.
Well, the board has set up. The board's about to set up a special meeting for tomorrow at three o'clock, if you guys want to tune into that. And we're gonna discuss that very issue.
Very good.
Oh, I have another question for Jason. Forward that recommendation onto the board, because they're gonna need it for tomorrow.
From the planning?
Or is that come from someplace else?
Yeah, I'll send that along. Okay.
Okay, any other? Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I was curious as to if there's been any thought giving to having meetings in person. Is that not feasible? I mean, we have a big room in there.
You know, Steve, especially understanding your situation, because it seems like your, your bandwidth isn't as strong as maybe the rest of ours right, is right now. I can certainly understand your frustration. Um, I'm certainly not necessarily in favor of that, but we have other people that, that think Mr. Wigan would like to say something.
Well, just to make sure everybody's, we're not in control of that, the governor's directives are in control of that. Right now they.
Yeah, and you know, I'm guessing, you know, I, you know, I'm putting this on the staff, but I mean, is there an availability for a planning commissioner to come in and sit in a quarantined office and use the bandwidth to be able to interact better or in a more timely fashion?
Well, I will say that other communities, um, are meeting in person.
That's right.
It's up to, it's up to the township board how they want to handle that. Um, if you'd like, we can give some more direction or get some more direction. I'm not opposed to meeting in person, but I would prefer to get some direction from the board.
Right. You know, my, my concern is in, is so, you know, some, some, uh, meetings that have site plan reviews, that kind of stuff. It's almost mind-blowing to try to do it like this. I mean, it's, it's almost futile. So maybe when we, if we have meetings like that, we did, I don't know, but I find that to be the most discouraging part of all this.
Steve, I, you know, just, uh, I mean, I've been real frustrated with this too, I remember the first, uh, board meeting I went to and I was trying to do a presentation and I had issues on my end and you also saw the last planning commission meeting where I lost, uh, the network. You know, so it certainly is very frustrating doing it this way, it's a whole new set of skills to adapt to. I can't say it's as much fun as meeting in person, but it just seems like it's a smart thing to do right now and, and it's, it is working for me. Any, anybody else? Mr. Johnson?
Well, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time it works for me too. Plus I tend to be short, so.
Okay. Well, I guess we just have to follow what the governor and the board says and, uh, we will we'll bring it to our vote, I guess, or what, whatever the board directs. So. Boy, that was easy getting rid of that. All right, guys, anybody else have, uh, a comment?
Yeah, uh, Mike, I could just throw in there, I don't think the issue is so much the committee members meeting in person or the board meeting in person for that matter, because we can maintain the distancing, but they're open meetings, so if you get any amount of public there, now you have an issue. And there might be some way to, to get around that by having the public, uh, being able to log in at, or out of, at a video portion of the meeting.
Okay, so could they, okay.
It's really hard. But you're right, the board has to address it first and whatever they, they say they're gonna do, right now we're told we can't do it because of the, uh, governor's directive, so. It's really nothing to consider right now.
You know, and we're fortunate, we have, uh, Jason with us, uh, that pushes the technology, is there a way that we can people, I mean, is there gonna be a time when they can come into the boardroom and speak over a camera or something or get up to the podium and not necessarily have the board there, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I think, I think all of these comments are great because I think we are gonna change the way that we're doing business, um. Perhaps all of our meetings, even if they're at the Township Hall, uh, in the future, should be put on Zoom. And, uh, we can always give people the opportunity to come in and not have to leave their home. And I'm hopeful that, um, um, in the future that we'll be able to have meetings via Zoom. Let's say it's the middle of February and there's a giant snowstorm, um, you know, either we're gonna meet in person or if inclement weather uh, continues, we're gonna meet on Zoom and here's the link. What I like about this, what I like about this format is the, the ability to keep doing business and the business of the township during a pandemic. If this has been the nineteen thirties, we wouldn't be doing anything right now, nothing would be getting done. Um, so it's pretty impressive that we're able through technology to continue to do this, so we may look at that in the boardroom. Also, I'll, I'll mention that, uh, the manager has indicated, you know, the, the Township Hall is closed to the public right now. And the Township Hall will continue to be closed to the public thirty days after staff goes back. Right now, that was supposed to be June twenty-first, uh, with the way that the numbers are going and the cases are spiking again, it may be a time later than that, so, uh, you know, I've been, I'm kind of under, and I warned, uh, Ryan of this too, that we may not be going back till around the first of the year, or it may be later, uh, in the fall, so. You know, it's, it's a challenge for us too, uh, we're learning on the fly as far as conducting meetings and how to, uh, get the best information to you. Um, and sometimes, you know, with regard to the site plan coming up on the twenty-second, you know, maybe we'll drop Steve off, um, you know, maybe a full set of plans if that's what he wants to see, um, something like that, you know. Um, we'll definitely print out the eleven by seventeens and get those to you, but I would also hope that you would trust your staff knowing that, you know, we're working diligently to make sure that we're providing you with the best interest we can or the best information that we can for you to make your decisions on.
Absolutely, Jason, thank you.
I just, you know, if there's anything else that you guys, the materials wise, I mean, we can always drop them off like we do the packets sometimes. Um, especially with the site plan review or anything else.
I really like looking at you guys, being able to see your faces and your, your reactions. I hope, and I, I know that we've talked about this before, but we may get a few more volunteers to step up if we were able to do meetings from home as opposed to having to come into the Township Hall twice a month, you know, for a pit and surely you get what, thirty-five bucks a meeting or something like that, I mean, you guys do a lot of good work in the township and you should be rewarded for that, and one of the ways to be rewarded was to be, to not leave your home if need be.
I like that idea. Any other discussion? Well, another interesting meeting, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Wigan, did you send me the?